Hi Carrie.
Hello.
Hi DJ, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thanks so much.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, hi Nathan.
Hi Jeff, how are you?
Good, good. I just got back from visiting my granddaughter in California, so I'm pretty happy.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. She's a beautiful being, we're lucky.
How old is she now?
Four and a half months.
Wow, nice.
She's got a beautiful toothless grin.
There's something about that toothless grin.
Yeah, well, you've been there twice, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I have. And let's see, so we are, Steve won't be here. And I haven't, has anyone perchance heard from Ashley?
No.
All right, well, I will call the meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board to order. And note that this is a virtual meeting on Zoom and it is being recorded. First up on our agenda is public comment. And does anyone have a public comment on an issue not already on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to landowner guidance and education. I believe we did get one inquiry. That was sort of referred to us by the assessors. And somebody contacted me on West Palm Road and I let them know to come if they could and, you know, doesn't seem like we have any takers for landowner guidance and education. With that, let's move on to associate member discussion. I would like to welcome Tom Seifer. I'm looking up right now, let's see. Did everyone get a chance to look at Tom's show of interest?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. Um, so, uh, I will say, you know, Tom, why don't you just, you know, take a moment, introduce yourself? You know, if you have anything you thought that you would like to say beyond what you've already written there, feel free to do so.
Okay, thank you very much, first of all, Nathan, and to the rest of the planning board for agreeing to meet with me.
Just thank you also for expressing your interest in being an associate member and serving as a volunteer in town. I think we all appreciate that.
Thanks, yeah. I hope everyone enjoyed the dusting of snow tonight. I've been in this town a little bit over six years. And I am fortunate that when I chose to buy a house here with my spouse, that I was in a position also to ramp down my commitment to a career in academics and coupled with a pandemic and with some volunteer tutoring I had done after I left University of Massachusetts. With the organization I mentioned in your introduction to me, Literacy Volunteers of Orange and Athol. I've now become more involved with there as an employee. And it really gives me a nice balance here. It was really nice to find this town and realize I could purchase the house, we were able to purchase any at all and be in a position to have a lot of free time to devote to other things. So during the pandemic, I volunteered at the Lever Co-op for about 11 months. Then, yes, I said I've been doing the literacy volunteer tutoring and it just feels really nice to do things that are so directly beneficial. And so this would give me an opportunity to do more of that in ways that I think would really also pull from my strengths. I like to think I'm good with both numbers and language and words. This seems to have a good combination of both. I had also expressed interest in the finance committee a few months ago, but did not, I guess, have enough experience to be part of that. That would have been a devotion or a commitment to more numbers, obviously. So this might actually be more appealing to me. Yeah. Please feel free to interrupt me. I don't know more of what you'd like to know besides what I wrote in my introduction letter.
Tom, I think, yeah, no, that's a great introduction. So if there's, does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask Tom? Michael, were you muted?
I am. I'm sure everyone's surprised to have questions. Hi, Tom, nice to meet you.
Thank you, Michael.
And thank you. So I have a bunch of questions. I'll sort of divide them up to give other people chances, but I guess the first question would be, as you probably know, planning board deals with land use issues. So I'm just curious, what makes you interested in land use?
Uh, firsthand experience and also, you know, theoretical and principled philosophical ideas about what I think, but I've owned property and properties over the years. I was fortunate to be able to purchase my first property as a two-family house in Providence, Rhode Island back in 2001, I believe. At the moment, we only own this house here in Shrewsbury, but at one point I owned four houses. A two-family, a three-family, and two single families. Three of those in Providence, two were adjacent properties, which brought up interesting beneficial issues to me when I went to sell them as one unit. And one on Long Island through the family, which I also sold eventually. So those brought me about 20 years ago into just having to know what things meant about zoning, especially because one of them was zoned for commercial use. Ended up not being able to be used commercially because in Providence, there's a competing or concurrent stipulation about historic use, which can override zoning definitions sometimes. So as much as I had wished, that might be a commercially usable property at some point in time, it had the chance of a snowball in a very tropical climate. So that was one harsh reality I learned about planning. But living in a town like this, sometimes I think about planning associated with will that hill be protected? Will that body of water be protected? Will will the actual land, the dirt, you know, will it be used appropriately? And I guess that's where I come from on kind of a very grand scale towards things. And yet I also live on Lake Wyola, where there's no lack of density, I guess, which might bring to light a lot of planning issues. So I feel as though I have experience in the use of land. Granted, more in urban settings, although the one in Long Island was more of a town setting and I see this as a, you know, a way to contribute to the future of just Shrewsbury being planned well.
Thank you for that. Am I echoing? No, okay.
No, you're better.
I'm better now. So and just before I ask my next question, I think the only person who is a professional planner was Jeff Lacy and he recently left. So the rest of us are not professional planners. So you know, don't feel like you're on the hook, happy to deliver lots of expertise because I don't think we bring it. I guess my second question sort of goes from the high level to the granular, you know, and I was encouraged by what you said about liking words and numbers. So, you know, a lot of this is knowing the zoning bylaws and being able to interpret them and look at statute. So I guess if you just like to take a moment or two to talk about like what your comfort level is with sort of understanding regulations or swimming in that, I think some people would rather run away. You know, so like just your tolerance for that and your interest in understanding those kind of things.
I, on the granular level, will be disappointed when I find the word filling instead of the word filing when reading for typographical errors, for example. But pride myself on a pretty good eye for those things, even though we have, well, that's a typical one nowadays, that auto correct often won't catch since each is a word. So things of that nature, I think are part of my character. I did manage to read, and I'm holding up my fingers in quotation marks, the zoning bylaw again today. I have read it before, but never from beginning to end. And today, at some points, I realized I knew what I was about to read, so I did skim through certain paragraphs. But I do think I'm able to process a lot of information well in a short period of time. And even better with guidance and more time. And recognize also that when I do it in a short period of time, I will need guidance to catch all the things I didn't pick up on. So regulations guided my very first job as an analytical chemist after college. And abiding by them and realizing that my strengths are in analytics. They go hand in hand. Teaching German for 20 years is kind of like a 60-page regulation document being turned into active use all the time, you know, any situation possible. What would you say? Well, here's the regulations for how you say things when that saying is done in German, for example, so. I think I'll leave that at that anyway.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll let anyone else ask questions. I got just a few more after, but Nathan, do you want to pick anyone else? Go for it.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to ask? I encourage other people to ask questions. Please rack your brains.
Hello, Tom, this is Robert Raymond.
Hi, Robert.
I guess I should. I, um, I think a big part of your role as an associate member will be in the future engaging in considerations of applications for installation of so, fields of solar in town. And I'm wondering, do you have any particular strong feelings with regard to in Shrewsbury, the installation of solar fields and what what are woodlands that might impact on you in your not meticulously following the the guide of the zoning bylaws? Is there any prejudice or feeling you have that you think would in any way be an obstacle to to really being guided by exactly what the zoning bylaws say?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to ask if you might have said the word not before the word meticulously. Because I was about to interrupt you and I thought, wait, let me see. And you did more or less answer what I was asking. So I would be meticulous about adhering to the bylaw, the zoning bylaw, the solar bylaw, existing law, so to say. I recognize that the solar fields are or could be an issue that goes beyond just what do the regulations say for many people involved? But that's where when we vote, we voice that, the way I look at it. If bylaws are coming up for change and we go to the polls and we vote on them. So we can affect what the existing bylaw is as a citizen, so to say, with our vote, but as an associate member on the planning board, I would recognize that it would be the bylaw. I'm, you know, a person might have to compromise things. I've been in situations of compromising my choice over what the rules say. So.
Thank you.
Nathan, can I just jump in with two quick follow-ups?
Please do.
Sure. So, Tom, it seems like this line of questions with associate members is just a norm these days. So Robert asked one of the ones I was going to ask and then the two follow-ups, I guess, and this, this came up because I don't know if Nathan, you've covered sort of what the official process is, but you know, if the planning board were to recommend you, then it goes to a joint vote with the select board and the planning board. So what's come up in the last couple of rounds is two sets of questions. So I just wanted to ask you now, so sort of air it. One is, have you ever written anything one way or the other on social media about your positions on solar installations?
No.
Okay. And have you ever written anything in a publication like a newspaper on your position on solar installations?
No.
Okay, thank you. Just needed to ask. Better to ask on the front end.
I see.
Yeah, thanks.
Now, I have a question. With having looked at our bylaw a little bit, and obviously you're checking out our meetings, so you're kind of you know, tuning in to town politics a little bit. Do you have any issues or not, not like a like I take issue with this, but you know, is there anything, you know, looking at, thinking about our zoning and our bylaw that you might be interested in adding or, or making changes to or even removing that, that you would speak to at this time?
No, I hadn't actually thought of that. Adding or change, may I just make sure I heard correctly, adding or changing or amending the bylaw?
So.
Something by law?
So one of the things that the, the board will do from time to time is draft various amendments to the bylaw that, you know, for example, several years ago, there was an effort by this board to you know, incorporate a, you know, a solar bylaw into the town bylaw. You know, before that, there was, you know, open space design and, you know, a lot of different various efforts that resulted in, you know, different iterations of the bylaw and into, you know, what we currently have. So I guess, you know, another way of asking the question would be, you know, do you, you know, can you think of anything that you would consider to be an important, you know, land use issue for the town that you you know, are interested in, not necessarily wanting to change it or you know, enact something pursuant to it, but even just something of interest?
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, I think I understand better now. Thanks. I wouldn't say I'd be coming into being an associate member with any agenda or plan about like, oh, I'm hoping I could generate discussion or even more about changing a bylaw or regulation of a certain nature. Things that I've recognized are important to me are equitable use of land. Recognition of the line between private and not exactly public, but when private has to, I think you all call it N A N R, when it's not a situation of this is just your private use, you're alone and you're okay. But when a citizen in America has to face the fact that, oh, my private use is actually having an impact beyond you know, unregulated activity. So equitable use, also historically equitable use, you know, nowadays we talk a lot about repeat creations, I think is the word, for people who have historically not been included. So I guess just going forward, I would like to hope to be an inclusive town for the way the land is used. That would be important to me. But I think a lot of what's important to me exists already. I think as an associate member, I expect now anyway, it would be more about witnessing and learning and stepping in as necessary, usually for special permitting processes, but I don't know that it would. And maybe it would, maybe I would contribute if there were a discussion about something that were a new topic or a new section in the bylaw eventually. I think that would come with time. If it came.
If you think this is all something you can wrap your head around?
Right. I, I don't think I have enough experience to actually bring forth a topic. But I know that certain topics are important to me, again, like that, you know, equitable use sort of thing.
Well, you know, you actually touched on something else that's process related, which is, you know, currently the associate member position on the planning board can only serve as a stand-in in a special permit hearing.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't certain. Okay.
Yeah. You know, to be honest, I that's kind of similar to a question that Michael asked me at the time. I was initially appointed to this board as a full member to fill a vacancy. So I was a little bit more applicable in that situation than in this situation. But I still thought it was a good question to ask anyone interested in a board. You know, a, you know, a full seat or associate member seat and the other thing to just keep in mind is that there are certain legislative efforts in flight that could result in our associate members having the ability to participate in other planning board business. If, if those pass, the history there is that, you know, we did the bylaw and we were going to allow for associate members to do any business, should there be a need. And then the attorney general rejected that piece and limited it to special permits. In addition, we do encourage involvement and discussion by associate members. But that was, that does not translate into voting. So even if you were not appoint, you know, not assigned as a, on a special permit hearing, you know, a, an associate member would have the ability to participate in conversation about any issue before the board and you know, and contribute in that way at, at our discretion. Someone else have any questions for Tom?
I, I was just going to suggest before, before we go to the next thing, just sort of reviewing the process. So Tom has a sense of what's before him.
Yes. So last meeting, we actually had a motion and a vote that passed to wait a month before making a vote to recommend an associate member. Once the planning board does vote to recommend an associate member, the next step is that we will go to the select board. Once we make the decision to do so and say, hey, we have And say, hey, we have. So and so that we would like to recommend be appointed as associate member and. And then we go to the select board and see what happens. With the vote between the two bodies in a joint session. So right now it's November, the appointment would be through the fiscal year. So in July, we would consider. You know, either new candidates or reappointing existing associate members. And so on and so forth. Is there anything I'm I'm missing from that, Michael?
The only thing I would just put out, Tom, we didn't invite you, in fact, would like if you stayed and. Listen to at least most of the meeting to get a sense of like what the business of the board is. And I think that's one of the. Thoughts is waiting a month is that we get to percolate on our end and you get to actually experience it, you know, see how, what what looks it feels like from, you know. Actually sitting through a meeting.
Not just YouTube.
Well, if you've done that, but I guess we're all real life pain is supposed to recorded.
And you get a little bit of a better view when you're on Zoom, you can, you know, have that. What do you call it? You have the layout instead of just the speaker view, which is for the recording. And yeah. It's good. Last, you know, last call, anyone else? Any questions, comments? Well, Tom, I like to thank you again for expressing your, oh, is Deacon, are you trying to talk?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just moving the computer.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Nathan, I wanted to ask, hi, Tom, I'm Jeff Weston here. I just wanted to ask. Hi, thanks so much for being interested in being an associate member. I wanted to know if you have any. Concerns or anything that you'd like to ask us in this whole process?
No, I think I understand the process. And. I guess your meetings are monthly. I think at your last meeting, the motion. Said either next month or at the next meeting, there wouldn't by chance be an earlier meeting would be my only wondering. Because it sounds as though it could take. Six weeks potentially. The holidays and all that coming, but I guess, well, I guess that would be my question. Might it sound as though we're looking at a January-ish moment if, well, I guess your meeting will be next December and then.
So. So. That would, that would depend. I would, I would say, you know, like so in theory, you know. For example, we we most likely will have a meeting in December. And if at that meeting we were to recommend, you know, take a vote to recommend, then there may be a select board meeting between then and. In the holidays and we might be able to get on the agenda. But that would be, you know, the select board could. Be tight, you know, they they might have something going on where it would be difficult to get on the agenda. Or it might just not work out. And then, yeah, it would potentially go into January or whatnot. And every now and again, we do have. A reason where we might have to meet off schedule. For example, if we get some business in tomorrow. We might have the scheduled meeting between now and and what would be our next regularly scheduled meeting. In December, which I don't know what the date is, you know, it's the second Monday of the month. So, so, yeah, there's a few different variables that can come into play, but generally speaking, right? Yeah, it's a month, you know, we meet once a month if we can help it. And then the select board meets typically every other week. They have more regular business they need to attend to. So it's. Usually pretty easy to get in a select board meeting in between planning board meetings, yeah.
Okay.
Holidays do, you know, a little wrinkle on that, but on most other months, yeah.
That might have been premature of me anyway, more to Jeff's question, I think. I would just offer, I don't know if I have any more specific questions though, but. I just wanted to make sure I offer myself available. I don't know what's allowed for asking me when, but feel free to send me an email. Or contact me if.
Oh, yeah.
If any of you thinks of more things.
Yeah, I would. Keep it posted on, you know, next time we meet, you know, I would send you something and. And then, you know, so if, you know, when we decide to go to the select board, you know, we would also. Keep you on the loop on that or, you know, keep any, anyone we recommend in the loop on that. Again, Tom, thank you very much for your interest in the planning board and very much appreciated and enjoy their conversation tonight.
Thank you. Like, I'll go off camera, but thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. You can go off camera and, you know, you can feel free to leave if you need to do anything. There's no obligation to stay.
I will stay. Sure. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. And we also, associate members have Mary David here. For the second time. And to start, I would like to ask because I did not quite get around to. Listening to the whole meeting, I got to the part where Jeff Lacy just dropped off of the meeting. Of the Z B A and everyone was like, is he just gone? What's happening? So Mary, what's going on with the Z B A or did? Did the Z B A elect a chair or?
So what we've agreed to do right now is rotate the chair on a. Application basis. So every time one comes in, one of us will take the lead on it. Unless it's real complicated and then John. Who has the experience would take the lead, but to give everybody an opportunity to. Experience running the committee and going through an application, we're gonna rotate it. For now, so that we all get some more experience in.
Fascinating. That's. It's good. Does anyone else? Want to say anything or any questions, follow up questions at this point over the last month?
I I guess my question was in line with yours, Nathan, which was just, you know, Mary. We had had a conversation, you know, I had shared my concerns about. Being on multiple boards focused on land use. So I was curious if you had. Thought about or made any moves in terms of, you know, be not being on the Concom, not being on the CBA. It sounds like you're gonna continue to be on the CBA. But just to get an update, if you had thought about. Making any changes in that regard or. Or not.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about making changes yet. I did a lot of research though and. And sent some information that, you know, it's been. History of the town. That people run multiple committees. You know, and you can go whether there's select board people or other volunteers because of the nature of how many volunteers there are. There are people right now serving on two, three, four, five committees. So for me, I'm not quite sure that it's a conflict. I think they all work together, the three committees in particular. You know, the CBA right now is. Is hard to, you know, there's two of us are new, so we're trying to work through that. The conservation committee has some things looking at too, but. You know, it's kind of hard to withdraw from something that you committed to for right now.
Right. Well, I appreciate the update and just to clarify, it's. I agree that people could be on multiple committees, I'm on two myself. It's the. Common area of Landry's that was concerned to me. And the fact that, you know, we could potentially looking at the same stuff. So that was, that was, that's just clarification, but thank you for the update.
Thank you.
And Mary, thank you for your willingness to be a volunteer for the planning board. It's a. It's a lot of work and I appreciate your willingness to help out the citizens of a town, of the town as a volunteer. So thank you so much for your interest.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I have also, Mary, I did receive your email that you sent today. And. You know, I guess you were just. Not sure why. Well, I mean, I guess you were concerned as to why. You haven't been appointed yet. And I'm not, I mean. You say, you know, you explained that you were seeking to get on the planning board, I believe back in, was it twenty twenty?
I believe that's my wish, yeah.
It might have been when I was appointed.
There was.
Look at that, Mary, you could have been chair of the planning board.
There we go. I would have had a lot of time to get experience with. With good people.
Well, yeah, so I mean. I'm not sure. You know, I don't think anyone has made a determination you're not a viable candidate. You know, we haven't. Had any roll call vote on on that question. And, you know, in the interim, we have received the, you know, inquiry from Tom, which I saw no reason not to entertain. And. You know, now that, and we also had the vote last month to. You know, wait a, at least one subsequent meeting before. Deciding whether or not to go to the select board with anyone. And there was also some. Sentiment about. Not rushing to pick a second associate member. So. Yeah, I'm wondering if I'm gonna hear anything from anyone on the board on. You know, do I hear a motion to? To go to the slot board?
Well, I'll jump in, Nathan, if I can. Separate from, well, I don't, I. I was geeking out somewhere in the last few weeks and I was looking at Robert rules and one of the things I talked about is. Not voting in the negative, you know, so you sort of want to vote in a positive kind of thing and. It got me thinking, what I would, what I feel comfortable doing, especially now that we have two people and the fact that I was the one who said I'm feeling. As much of a rush right now. Is. I would rather not make, do a vote. Today and. Just let's, you know, wait a month, people can percolate. And we've heard from Tom, we've heard from Mary, we got an update from Mary. I think it's reasonable and there's nothing. Immediate at this point. Now, there is no active special permits. But we have one associate member we've chosen, so. I guess. Rather than vote, not to, not to vote, I would just say. Let's not vote right now and. By by not making a motion, basically saying. Let's extend the period at least for a month. And. I just, I would make a, I guess I don't feel comfortable making a motion saying either considering Mary or saying let's do it. Make a vote next month because I'd like to wait till next month and then we can decide what we want to do. That's I guess what I'm trying to say. That's just my opinion.
Would it make sense to? To say to close down the application so we don't end up in a situation where another person? Shows interest and then would we then wait another month? You know, if like a third candidate came forward. In the interim while we're waiting to vote or whatever we do.
I I'll just respond for me, actually. I mean, I think at other times, you know, when we had no one or when we had, when it felt like we had. You know, the subdivision plans were coming down and it was pretty immediate. That there was a concern that we did have associate members in queue. Then I think having a rolling period is sort of like you need to close it because you have to make a decision. For me, part of the thing is, we've got an associate member, we don't have any special permits before us that. If we're thinking about the best interest of the town, we would want to have the best person as associate member and potentially they would find follow a similar route to you. And not quite the same as Nathan because he was, you know, he was temporary but full. But getting people in the hopper who we thought. So. You know, if next month there's another person, we can decide what we want to do. But you're, it's not a bad idea. I just. Even if we closed it down, I think it does commit us to sort of having to pick one because we have one. So I guess that's. I don't want to create a. I wouldn't want to create a false. Expectation that even if we closed it, we had two candidates who were interested that either of those get recommended because it's not a sure thing.
I I would not want to close it down. You know, if. You know, right now, I mean, it's, there's nothing that prevents us from making a decision today. There's nothing that prevents us from. From waiting till next time we meet or or later. Right? And, you know, I mean, it's obvious, I would. You know, I mean, there is, the closer we get to June, then, you know, the, the. Less amount of time is going to go between. You know, a potential second appointment and then, you know, reappointment at the end of the fiscal year or the beginning of next fiscal year. That's no matter to me. I'm. So if, if no one is ready to make a motion, then. You know, by default, we will revisit this. In our next meeting.
I think that's great. I I'm certainly in agreement with that, Nathan.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. It seems that there's a. Little bit of consensus on on this. I see that Miriam has her hand up.
Yeah, hi, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what you were just saying, Nathan. So are you agreeing that? You're not going to, you're going to close? Or you're keeping it open for new applications still?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if if we receive an application, I I don't see why we wouldn't. You know, have a conversation. We have, we have an opening for associate member.
Yeah. I would just like to make a comment, which I was gonna make earlier during the public comment, but I I couldn't get to the unmute to raise my hand. Is that, you know, I would just caution everybody about not appearing too much like you're trying to to. You know. I, how can I put it? It's not really clear what the criteria are for selecting somebody. And it seems like it's a little bit of a moving target. That the standards are changing over time and I'm. You know, I think it would be wise to avoid looking like you're trying to cherry pick. Or looking for the most likable candidate or the candidate. You know, it's not really clear what the criteria are if somebody is coming forward and looks like a reasonable person and. Showing commitment. I I just, you know, we deal with this on the conservation commission when people want to. Be appointed and and want the support of the commission and. I guess my perspective as a chair is wanting to be inclusive and welcoming. Of anybody who wants to volunteer without trying to. Suss out where I think people's biases align, so.
Well, if I may, Michael.
Okay.
Well, you know, Mary, I, there, there is a. You know, a clear standard, which is that the board arrives at a decision by a majority roll call vote with a motion and second to. Recommend someone to the select board. And, you know, and, you know, we have this. I don't know if it's unusual, but, you know, we had, we did have kind of staggered applications come in with a recent sentiment that we should invoke. That we should, you know, wait a subsequent meeting. And, you know, I, I, I think we just had a, you know, a good conversation with another person from town. Who is interested in in the board. And I don't see any. Problem with us taking our time to. You know, see if we can arrive at someone everyone feels. And good about and that that very well might be Mary, might be Tom, might be someone else that comes tomorrow. And, you know, Michael, if you want to add anything, please do.
Yeah, so I, Mary, I, you know, I hear what you're saying. I guess I would differ. I would, the thing I agree with that has changed over time. I would say, you know, things were more casual. Before and I think we're trying to be more intentional and more responsible and I think that's a good thing. I pointed out, you know, our recent vote last month is actually copying the process of the Concom, which is the Concom having. I think you guys hire people to attend to meetings, so we're only doing one, but. I think it gives both the the board time to think about things so that, you know, it's being on the planning board, even an associate member. If they're stepping in, it's significant. And. For me personally, although I definitely appreciate people being. You know, volunteering, you know, having volunteered a long time, I appreciate that. But I think it's also a matter of trying to figure out what's the right fit. For the committee. And. There is, there is, you know, we have the benefit right now of not making an urchin under the gun decision. So trying to do right by the town, getting someone who would work well on the planning board. You're, you're correct in that there is no. you're, you're correct in that there is no firm criteria. Uh, we sort of evolved some kind of practical stuff, given the solar, you know, question. So de facto litmus test in that regard, but short of that, um, you know, if, if someone said, I don't like regulations, I don't read regulations, I don't believe in regulations, I think that's probably a a disqualifier, but short of that, you know, I would try to find the right fit. Um, so I don't think we're trying to be preferential and I feel like we're being very intentional in this, which is, I think it's a good evolution.
Hey, uh,
If you're saying something, Miriam, you're muted.
Um, no, I didn't say anything, but I guess I could just say, I, I just, I guess my thought about it is that, um, you know, when people come forward and apply for things, um, you know, not getting approved can feel like a rejection and, um, you know, I would just encourage the complaining board to think about, you know, doing it in a, a way that feels good. Especially when you have, um, maybe more than one candidate applying for a spot because, um, somebody won't get chosen and, um, you know, I don't think any of us want to, um, be hurtful.
Well, thank you for your comments, Miriam. And I'd like to, uh, you know, just add that, um, you know, w- we are not rejecting, uh, Mary David, um, as a candidate. We, we have not done that. And, uh, we just haven't, uh, made the decision or, and are not ready to make a decision at this time.
Uh, um,
Welcome, Keith.
Yeah. Um, Miriam, I, I do want to, um, say that I do appreciate your, um, raising the sensitivity of, um, I suppose the vulnerability and, and part of people who put themselves on the line and apply, um, and it is to some extent of a vulnerable, um, situation that they put themselves in. So I think it's important to raise our sensitivity regarding that, um, um, our, our desire not to hurt, not to hurt anyone, um, in the process. So thank you, Miriam. Okay. I would say I'd be happy, Nathan, if we move on to tiny houses, which is going to be a conversation.
Yeah, I would like to move on. So we're going to do that. Okay. So, uh, again, um, Mary, thank you for, uh, coming back and, uh, providing us, um, an update with your situation on the ZBA and, uh, talking to us again. And, uh, no hard feelings in, uh, not making a decision tonight. We're just taking our time. Next on the agenda is by law discussion, um, tiny houses. So, um, I saw a few, you know, I know, uh, Michael sent a bunch of stuff out and then, uh, today there was an email from, uh, Robert. So I don't know, uh,
What? Uh, maybe if I can just set it up and explain a little bit of what I said, and then we can go from there, Nathan?
Sounds good.
Okay. So the two main things that I, uh, or three things I sent out, um, one was a consolidated version of where ex- accessory dwelling units show up in our bylaw, um, because they're sort of interspersed as you might have seen. So that was just a document to sort of say, if you're considering accessory dwelling units, this is the totality of where it shows up, um, at one document. So that was that. Um, I also sent out the spreadsheet, which I tried to identify the different aspects which are shown in the Sony bylaw, um, then where the bylaw references, so what section it is, um, what our position is in terms of the current bylaw. So for example, uh, the number of curb cuts, that's sort of the issue. The stance where the bylaws are now, which is there's one unless there's a pre-existing or approval, it shows up in four point four dash two A1. And then most importantly, is there opportunity, and we could discuss anything clearly to amend it, but is there opportunity to discuss it in relation to tiny houses? Um, so that was the other document. And then, uh, I think I said that one other thing which I can't find out, but I, I think just in summary, but you know, of, one of the, there's two things that came, that jump out in all the research because I looked at, oh, the other doc was a list of municipalities that have tiny houses and have ADUs. Um, so what was interesting to me is I had always assumed prior to this research that most municipalities had accessory dwell unit, um, allowed, and that's not the case. Uh, I think it's like thirty or forty in the entire Commonwealth, which has three hundred fifty one towns and cities. So that was surprising. So ten percent approximately. Um, and in terms of tiny houses, the fewer, you know, it's a handful plus, um, and some of them, it's not really clear if it's tiny houses or just flexible ADUs. So just setting things up a little bit, um, my thought in terms of our conversation is there's tiny houses and what that means, which I think looking at the international definition is really five hundred square feet or less. Um, and then in relation to accessory dwelling units, right now there's nothing that for, I guess, so that's that. And then I think the other thing that's important to know, and it gets to what Robert shared, is that there's a dividing line in tiny houses. There's tiny houses that have wheels. Uh, and there's tiny houses that don't have wheels. And so most communities don't allow dwellings with wheels. Uh, and they could be RVs, they could be tiny houses, they could be, um, trailers, but most communities don't allow them. Uh, if they do, they could be like a trailer park or stuff like that, but that's the vast majority don't allow wheel dwellings. Um, the one Robert said today, she, he can address himself is in Nantucket where it's wheeled, but it has to be on a foundation. So it's like this hybridy kind of thing. Uh, and then the last thing I guess I would say is just from my reflection, if we wanted to be hospitable to smaller dwellings, so less square feet, we could look at if there's a subset of our accessory dwelling unit bylaw that makes it more hospitable. Um, the interesting thing to remember is accessory means it's the second one. So you could have a teeny, teeny, teeny primary dwelling unit. If it didn't have wheels, it could be on any property, you know, and then it's just a matter of all the other parameters regarding dwellings. Uh, so there's, so we could accommodate our regulations about ADUs the way it exists to make it smaller and more friendlier for tiny houses. We could also create a subclass and say if it's under five hundred square feet. So that's, that's just sort of the framing of, it's, there's a lot. I'll shut up now.
Yeah, um, I just, it is a lot, obviously, and you know, it's gonna, it's gonna take us time to get through this, but that's all right. Um, well, I'm, I, you know, my question, Michael, is I, I didn't, um, get around to, uh, looking at the building code too much. And I was wondering if you or anyone else on the board may have done any analysis on that. Is there uh, and I think you threw out five hundred square feet. And, you know, I know that there's not currently, uh, any mention of tiny houses in the Massachusetts building code. And then there's attachment Q of an international building code and so on and so forth. So, um,
You looked at it a lot.
So, yeah, with the, uh, existing, um, Matt state building code, are, are there kind of some limitations that are kind of like by default in place that might go away if, if one of those, if that bill is, uh, adopted and, uh, attachment queue is added to the state building code? Like, is there like a, a gap between those two scenarios?
I'll let Robert speak and I'll follow up if that's helpful.
Yeah.
Well, I, um, m- my interest is, um, the uh, capacity of a bylaw to endorse a tiny house as the primary residence. So that, uh, someone, uh, can build a tiny house for whatever, thirty thousand dollars and, um, and have that as a primary residence. It certainly serves, uh, a could serve, uh, Shrewsbury being a much more affordable place to live. Um, appendix Q, uh, which, um, which, uh, Michael brought to my attention and, and we both thought that it was now the law in Massachusetts, but appendix Q basically is um, an international building code that sets forth the standards, uh, that a building inspector can endorse uh, for a house that is four hundred square feet or less. Uh, appendix Q is now, uh, a bill pending in the Senate and House in Massachusetts, but, uh, without without any action having been taken, although it seems like it's a bill that's been supported. Uh, but if appendix Q is passed, I would love perhaps to, uh, I know I wrote a, a, a letter to, uh, representative and senator asking them to support it. If appendix Q was adopted by the state, state legislature, it would provide a code for our building inspector to say, yes, uh, this, um, uh, this house, um, this tiny house meets these requirements and, uh, appendix Q basically modifies some of the height requirements, uh, the stair requirements, uh, to make it, uh, uh, more doable for this, uh, tiny house. Um, the, uh, referenced, I, the, the Nantucket, um, bylaw I sent out, um, endorses the idea, uh, uh, or legalizes the idea of having a tiny house uh, be a primary residence. Um, and, uh, like Michael suggested, uh, it seems to be something of a hybrid, uh, that is you can have a tiny house on wheels, but it has to be set on a foundation. I would think a tiny house on wheels that is set on a foundation is no longer a tiny house on wheels, but it's on a foundation. Um, but, uh, be, be that as it may, uh, I would, um, uh, really love to explore the idea of having a tiny house be a primary residence as well as just an accessory residence. Um, and all of this I think would ride on appendix Q being, uh, finally passed by the, uh, by the legislature.
Yeah. So I'll just jump in. Thank you, Robert. So Nathan, to answer your specific question, I haven't gotten into looking at the details of the state building code in relation to appendix Q. My hunch is there's probably some inconsistencies there, but if other municipalities are doing it, uh, maybe that's incorrect. Maybe you're allowed to do it. Uh, and appendix Q, I think in codifying it internationally is saying, you know, this is what makes it safe, you know? So for example, a lot of tiny houses, the floor space have a loft. So they specify the, the tread and the, and this, the slope with the stairs going up to loft, the square footage of the loft, the height. So I don't know if it's a safety kind of thing and, and that's defining us, uh, a tiny house or if it comes in conflict with the current state law. Um, so that I don't know, sort of like the next level down. I mean, if it was, if it was precluded by building code and state law, then we couldn't do it at all. But I would think if Nantucket's doing it, that there's some way we could research that. I think to pick up on Robert's point and maybe just to sort of fray in the discussion a little bit, if we just, if we decided that we wanted to support tiny houses as primary residences, I think that, that is a longer, deeper conversation because right now, you know, the way the zoning is, it's, you know, so there's minimum lot sizes, for example, for everything. Uh, and there's curb cuts and all the stuff that, you know, presumed about a quote unquote normal sized house. And so you could say, well, I want to build a small house on the same lot size as a regular house. Uh, it doesn't reduce the, the cost of the land, the way you would drive down the prices to have a smaller lot. Uh, that definitely opens up contentiousness of like, okay, so instead of having two hundred fifty feet of frontage and ninety thousand square feet, uh, we'd make it smaller, you know? So we're all of a sudden changing what a, a normal lot size would be in zoning to accommodate tiny houses. And it's not to say we can't, but it's definitely a deeper conversation. Um, and then the next thing would be, well, creating a neighborhood where you can do that. And I think just to think of, one of the reasons that would be a slower conversation is I could imagine someone who wasn't necessarily trying to build a tiny house, but they could build, you know, if, if we did that, just say you could build on half a, half the lot size, you built a tiny house. In five years, would you be able to expand that into a regular sized house? You know, and then you would have a bigger house on a smaller lot. So I think there's some dominos which make this a, a conversation where we sort of have to run through some of the scenarios. Uh, but right now, if you want to build a house, it's the same lot, no matter where you are in Shrewsbury. And so we'd be carving out a different, uh, designation for houses that have smaller square footage, which is not a bad thing. It definitely creates accessibility, but there's ripple effect. So I think one of the pathways is say, we're trying to achieve different status for smaller dwellings as a primary residence, or we also, or we're looking to figure out how to make our existing accessory dwelling units uh, more flexible. And I'll just give you an example. Uh, the two things in the spreadsheet that I sent out is, you know, you can have an accessory dwelling unit right now that's detached, but it has to be within seventy five feet of the primary house. And according to the zoning bylaw, if it's attached to the primary dwelling, it could only have been if the primary dwelling was there before two thousand and five. So if you have a house after two thousand and five, or if you have something that's further than seventy five feet, you can't build. So a place where we could explore is say, oh, maybe it's a hundred feet. Maybe it doesn't have to be built in two thousand and five or earlier, you know? So there's things that would make the accessory dwelling unit more open to create easier opportunities for people to have an accessory dwelling unit. Um, so we could do both pathways, accessory dwelling or primary. Uh, I don't know if that's clear, but it's, there's a lot of stuff here for sure, um, and possibilities or not possibilities, depending on what we want to value.
Uh, first I would say, I wouldn't expect any part of this, uh, to be a shallow effort. Um, you know, I think, uh, you know, we need to be thoughtful about what we're doing and, 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 you know, take some time to to go deep. Um, and I think anything, uh, you know, you know, we're, you know, we're trying to do something here. And, you know, I think you'd probably say it ties in with, uh, affordability. And, um, you know, if that's what we want to do, then I think, you know, it's, it's worth doing right. Um, you know, I am certainly not opposed to, you know, having kind of a multi-faceted approach. And at the same time, you know, we can also have an iterative approach. For example, if we say, okay, you know, um, take lot size, right, uh, carve out a smaller lot size for you know, a house that meets a certain criteria. Um, is the first step or, uh, you know, take, you know, loosening some of the criteria around accessory use is the first step um, to, um, open it up. I mean, I think, you know, the, uh, you know, based on what Robert was saying with, uh, wanting to say, you know, okay, primary residents, uh, tiny houses. You know, would we need to do anything today? I mean, is there anything, uh, preventing someone from building a tiny house on a lot today other than just the economics of it?
No. I mean, and the one thing that was I countered the affordability, which struck me and not Robert, I don't know if you did any more research, but one or two of the articles I sent out as background was if you build, just say you have a primary dwelling that's four hundred square feet on a regular sized lot, you still have to worry about electric, septic, water. So all those utility things have to be in place, uh, unless you, you know, do composting toilet or something like that. I don't, I'm not sure actually if it's composting toilet with the, how that works with the building inspector, but
They appoint at the library, I'm told.
That's true, but who knows?
That's, that's that town too. So.
Yeah.
I don't think town, I don't know if town gets exemptions from, uh, border health stuff like they do.
They, things built before nineteen ten get an exemption. Uh, but, but it's mostly those, those. Uh but but it's mostly those those realities go counter to the affordability. So I think part of it is even if you built a tiny house on a primary, as a primary unit now on a regular lot. The cost of the building would be down, but the other stuff, the land would still be high and the utilities would still be high. So I think. Part of it is sort of saying, if we want to make Schutzbury more accessible in terms of affordability. We might look at the lot size. We, I don't know what we can do about the utilities. I haven't gotten that far, uh but I think they go hand in hand. Uh because someone might say, yeah, you just cut my building costs in half, but everything else is the same as a big house, so why would I build a big house? So.
Yeah, um. Right?
It's complicated.
No, it it is. And I uh, so I was looking at, um, you know, I asked uh at the last meeting about. You know, with the state and affordable housing and whatnot and. I I touched base briefly with Rita on that and uh the kind of takeaway I had is it. It seems like it it would be harder to do here. Um Deacon.
Well, I was just gonna say, it it seems to me that that we might very well want to wind up. Looking at at collective utility solutions. Because the the costs really, you could spend more on you to on um water and septic than you did on the building. I mean, if you had to do it, if you had to do each each system individually.
Deacon, is that a building inspector requirement?
Well, you've got to have water and septic, I mean.
No, but I mean, the fact that it's shared, like, is that something that we would?
That's an issue, that's an issue that is really going to be have have to be thought through, I think. Because I'm, I don't think we have the um. I don't think we have to have regular, I think, I don't think we have regulations in place that even say how, what. What kind of requirements would apply for collective solutions.
That's helpful. Yeah, the other thing I thought about, which is just sort of generally to think about it and then and then I'll. I see Miriam as a hand up. I was thinking, you know. Objectively speaking, if you were to have a big plot of land and you were building tiny houses, you'd sort of want to cluster it, sort of like open space design. Would be. Um so that sort of makes sense, but I'm just thinking about in terms of the town politics of it. All of a sudden, you know, you're changing some part of town to have denser uh buildings. Um that, you know, it could be consistent with open space design, which we have in place, but it might also look different. So I think that's one, again, those sort of those issues where. Um it'd be better to have small clustered housing together for economies and for less impact. Um why have a tiny house on acre when you can have ten tiny houses on an acre? Uh but it just calls out, you know, do we then rezone part of town where that's possible? Um and that'll definitely be a dust storm. Um it's but not to say we shouldn't do it, but it, I think, all of a sudden, big implications occur.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but the economics of the of the water and the septic are very real.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, of course. And that and that's why I was starting to uh get at Deacon is um. You know, with. A lot of this stuff, you have a a big project, um right, and uh, you know, at least with the forty B, the way it works is. You know, you you put in uh. You know, some sort of dense uh housing development and there are some, you know, higher level units that uh bring in a little bit more money than the other ones. And that kind of helps to pay for the, you know, the lower income one. Uh and the other thing is that uh. You know, not having, you know, uh town water and and town sewer and uh, you know, having to deal with uh well water and uh. You know, compostable toilet, septic kind of thing, you know, I think. You know, makes that at least that uh kind of uh development, you know, possibly uh. Out of reach for a community like this. Now, I think, you know, what Robert's getting at is, you know, he's looking to have something a little bit more simple. To just have it on the table um is uh just a way for someone, you know, to. You know, get into a, you know, situation where they maybe own a piece of land or uh. Or just are able to, you know, rent on a piece of land affordably that is um, you know, more affordable than the status quo in Schutzbury now. Right? Um, you know, just create, you know, a way to eke in some affordability here. And once otherwise, you know, uh. You know, it's not, it's not cheap to get a house in Schutzbury with the, you know, the normal houses you see. Um and I don't know, I'm trying to. Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, just, it it Deacon's right, though, it does, it ties back into econ- economics, right? You know, the, in order to. Kind of achieve that objective of, you know, you know, putting, putting something within reach for. People that, you know, where it wouldn't otherwise be in reach. Um, yeah, we're gonna have to get creative with uh some of these solutions, right? And uh, Miriam, would you like to speak?
Yeah, hi, I was just thinking about the septic, um because there's Title V. Uh regulations around um what's allowable for septic. I was just taking a look at them and. You know, the problem with like a development is I'm not even sure if you could have spaced out. Structures with a shared leach field. I'm not sure that the leach field functions when it's that far away. Um, you know, if we're talking about, you know, one shared lot with multiple units, I'm I'm not sure about that. You'd have to really talk to the Board of Health, I think.
Well, Title V is a state reg, right?
What?
There's a state reg.
Yeah.
Yeah, Title V is, but it's permitted at the local level, so the Board of Health uh approves and regulates.
Yeah, no, I um I would imagine it will be having conversations with the Board of Health at some point along this journey.
Or you'd have to.
Yeah.
I mean, but yeah, septic and water could could easily be fifty thousand dollars per unit if if they were all. If each one had to have its own.
Septic and water together?
Yeah, you could easily spend fifty thousand.
Wow. Some of the, yeah, I thought some of the uh, I was looking at some of the stuff uh on one of the websites that Michael had. And uh there was some numbers out there that seemed really low to me. I think that might have been, you know, at the very least, uh, you know, a state further south than here and uh, you know, prior to all this inflation we've had. But yeah, no, it's um, it's kind of daunting, but I I'm sure, uh, you know, I want to, uh, yeah. We have a lot of information, you know, I I think we want to look at, you know, what uh. You know, the the attachment is attachment queue, um and, you know, what kind of thing that would do, um. And we want to look at, you know, group septic and uh water and see what the feasibility is of that, um. And then I think, you know, the the simplest thing we can start to think about is is uh what kind of um. Approach would we take? You know, the simplest approach of uh changing the requirements for. A buildable lot. Uh what those requirements might be. Um. In order to, you know, facilitate if someone wanted to build one tiny house on a somewhat small.
Again, the uh, one of the problems you run into with uh with um the septic and the water is that. There are, there are distances and setbacks that have to be, that have to be observed.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, you know, it gets to be pretty tight.
Yeah, well, I'm looking, leach lines can't be more than a hundred feet long, is what I'm here seeing here online.
Yeah.
So leach line is uh post uh, that's out of the distribution box, right? Miriam?
I I am reading through this, but it looks to me like there is a a maximum distance that you can have between the the tank. And the leach field, you can't, it's not unlimited, so.
Yeah, and you've got to have, and you've got to have a minimum difference, distance between a well and and the leach field too.
Right, right, and plus whatever setbacks, yeah. You can have tight tanks, which are less expensive. They're expensive to maintain. They can be very expensive on a monthly basis. But they're very inexpensive to build.
What are they?
A tight tank is basically like a septic tank, but it doesn't have an outlet. And you have to get it pumped every month and it can be extreme, a lot of properties down by the lake have them. They're very expensive. They can be like five hundred dollars a month to pump out if you're living. Um depending on how much water you use and.
Yeah.
You know, the other issue is finding a uh servicer. I think during the pandemic, there were. Some folks down at the lake were having trouble finding someone to service their units, so um. You know, you're kind of dependent on having somebody to pump you.
Yeah.
I think there's been some complications around that lately too with maybe uh. And I think they were using that sludge for uh, you know, repur- repurposing it is like fertilizer or something like that. And then they started finding PFAS in it and whatnot, right? So uh, yeah, now there's some, a lot of tricks around here um with this stuff.
The other just radical, quote-unquote radical to think about is. You know, we're sort of thinking from a a tiny house in a rural community setting, but like I remember. You know, when we were talking about lot oh three two before the library was there, you know. Jeff had conversations with the COA about, do we have senior housing in the back, the back lot, way behind the life? You know, and so one of the benefits of having a bigger building is that the units are all in one structure. Um, you know, sort of, it's it's not the usual rural design, but you know. And it's not, doesn't have the romance of a tiny house where you walk out and stare at the trees, you'd have a, you know, but that's another thing, we're looking at affordability. Is there a way, we allow multi-dwelling houses. I haven't looked into the detail of that, but. That's another way to achieve affordability, uh, you know.
Uh, before we, before we leave this topic, I just wanted to throw out the thought. That if we're interested in the possibility of tiny houses. Uh perhaps we should consider as a planning board, sending a a letter to the legislature. Supporting uh the passage of appendix Q because it seems like it has support. But for whatever reason, it's sitting in uh uh the Joint Ways and Means Committee, I guess. So uh just throw out that thought to consider perhaps for next meeting.
Yeah, probably have to be that. I mean, I would, I would uh say if anyone had anything uh close to ready to go, we could entertain it. But that would, should probably be on the agenda.
Yeah, I would support that. Robert, you want to attempt to draft something?
I will.
Okay, and I just as a, as a editorial, the fact that it's in Ways and Means is a good thing because it means it got one step out of committee. So it's it's less stuck than other things.
Uh-huh. Well, yeah, one of those uh of the, I can't remember which, but one of them seemed like it died a long time ago. It's not officially dead, but it's just in purgatory. And the other one seems like it was a little bit more recent effort and. You know, it's still kind of.
Yeah, la- last session it died and then Robert pointed out, there's there's two current bills that are um for this session, so there.
Yeah.
I think we could support that. Yeah, you know, the other thing, I don't know, Robert, if you want, I mean, it's at some point if we wanted to. I guess, well, I have two things. One is just a question for you all, which is, I'm happy to research more. I got a little bit of direction, but. Um if there's things that you want me to look at or dive deeper into, I'm happy to do it. This is sort of like the first, here's everything that I could find. But if we want a deeper dive at something, I could try to look into it as best I can. The other thing is if we. We've never had anyone talk to us about stuff, but if there's experts in tiny houses at some point, you know. Later in the winter, if there's, we wanted to do that, that's an opportunity. Uh it's it's totally not what we've done before, but we could consider it.
Yeah, I like that idea.
I would say, Michael, looking into uh what Deacon's bringing up, the water and the septic and. I'm listening to this and I'm just curious if. If a person wanted to put up a new dwelling in Schutzbury, tiny house or not, and they didn't want to put in a septic. They wanted to do a composting toilet system, is that allowed? Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I don't, it's not our purview, right? Like.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it, well, Miriam might know, I think it's a Board of Health thing.
I think you can have a composting toilet, but you have to have gray water. System and uh composting toilets don't manage gray water, and so you have to have a tank and leach field for the gray water.
Okay.
Which is showering, what?
Excellent point.
So, yeah.
Gotta have.
Power and laundry. Yeah, so you have, because, you know, I've lived in this part of the world long enough. I know people who have just a pump well and a composting toilet. And, you know, don't necessarily live primarily in that dwelling, live their part of the year or whatever. Um and can live that way. So it, that makes it a lot more affordable, but obviously there's a lot of problems that we could run into if that was just permitted. Uh, you know, if people could do as they wished in that sense.
Well, they couldn't because they'd be subject to Board of Health regulations and so.
Right.
You want to make sure your zoning is in alignment with Board of Health or else creating. Like chaos, right? There needs to be, and I think, you know, your something by law says you have to be in accordance and in compliance with Title V. And Board of Health and other uh permitting, so there's no way around that.
So actually, probably the, you know, folks you're referring to that have a pump well or whatever is probably a grandfather. Or even uh uh lawfully non-conforming, uh perhaps.
Yeah, well, we're gonna leave it at that, but I, you know, I think just. The, if Michael looking into that as something, it sounds like a composting toilet system. Is allowed, but you're gonna need something for the gray water either way, because that could make it more affordable.
Right, you know, the other thing, just as a factoid, there's a difference between permanent residents and the temporary. So, for example, you're not allowed to have a trailer home or an RV as a permanent resident in Schutzbury. But as I put in the spreadsheet, you can have it for fourteen days at a stretch. Or up to a year if you're doing construction, or up to eighteen months if you're doing reconstruction. So like the house that burned down in the center of town.
Right, right.
You know, when you're rebuilding, so those are all temporary. Uh and so one could have like a little outbuilding somewhere where you're sort of. You know, off the grid, and as long as you decide you're permanent resident, you can probably get away with it without getting in trouble. Uh so, which is different than zoning, but. I duly noted about the further research, actually, I can, I'll, I'll try my best to look into that.
Um Miriam, do you uh want to say something else?
Yeah, I had one more, one more piece of information. Um when septic systems are permitted, they're permitted based on the number of bedrooms. Which is weird because you'd think it'd be permitted by the number of people, but they assume that two people can live in one bedroom. Um and so there's a certain amount of sizing of septic systems based on the number of bedrooms. And tiny homes usually are just one bedroom, maybe at the most two, but I don't think you could ever have four people living in a tiny house. So you might want to consider like a cap on number of people. Um but that would also limit the size of the septic system. So if you're looking at like, what is the average cost of a septic system? That's probably for a two or three-bedroom home, not for a tiny home, which would never have that many bedrooms.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's uh. Was, you know, it's like a. You know, by reducing the number of uh bedrooms, it's uh, you're. You still have to have all those components and engineering work done, even if it's just a one-bedroom house versus a three-bedroom house. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a bigger box, right? So it's gonna cost more, but it's still, you know, you're not able to avoid uh various costs. Uh uh Les- Leslie, uh Brackenridge, would you like to?
I was just going to comment on Miriam's statement. I think regulation makes it easier to uh. Name how many bedrooms as opposed to try and regulate how many people are spending the night more than once. You know, it, what about if you have guests over? Oh, you can't stay?
I would agree with that, Leslie. It's uh, you know, I, yeah, I I would agree with that. The uh determination of uh of that is 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 probably pretty well set. Um pursuant to Title V and, you know, I think we'll probably look at at that so that we can understand uh what we're dealing with in terms of state regs. But uh that's a good, a good and fair point, uh Leslie, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No, I can't get my hand done, but I'll work on it.
Okay, take your time. Um before we move on to the next agenda item, I do want to try and just uh, you know. Give anyone here who is, you know, thinking about doing some research between now and our next meeting, you know, kind of some, you know, good guidelines is uh. Uh, to what direction uh we're going. Uh, I'm gonna try and make a little list on that. Um, and so who wants to, uh, does anyone want to take a stab at that?
But I think me and Robert are in queue for doing some stuff, but if. Other volunteers, I don't need to own this thing at all.
I'm not talking about assignments, Michael. I'm just trying to talk about, you know, the general direction that, uh, you know, what we'd like to, uh. You know, look at next and, you know, I mean, you know, you can consider it uh. In your research, but anyone who's looking at this would, you know, probably consider the same things, right? So.
Oh, okay, okay, I got it.
But, you know, we're looking, we're gonna look at uh. You know, what can be done, you know, if it's a uh like a cluster style development to consolidate uh. You know, utilities in order to make a project economical.
Uh, could I make a comment here? Um, Michael, um, I want to return to what you said about a multi unit dwelling. In South Hero, they did something that was just fantastic. They put this multi unit dwelling. Behind in town land behind like the fire station. For the elderly. And it um, it's a beautiful complex and it's reasonable uh in cost for the elderly and um. I think it's a great idea that a good use of land that wouldn't have been used for other purposes. Um, so I think that's an idea to think about, a multi unit uh group for, um, again, for the elderly or people who are low income. The second thing is that I'd like, um, my preference would be to not look upon what we're doing as a final. Uh, a final act, but maybe um over the process of a few years. Regulations to make accessory dwelling units more accessible, changing little things, um. Like seventy-five feet to a hundred feet or changing that you don't have to be related to the person living in the accessory dwelling unit. Of just little things and moving forward towards the goal of making um. The uh housing in Chutesbury more affordable. And I think if we look upon it as small tasks moving in the right direction. I think it's less overwhelming. So um, that's what my preference would be to just to do. What are the little things that we could do right now to make it move forward towards our goal of greater affordability rather than a final? Uh, a final result, which I think is not really even attainable at this point.
Thank you, Jeff. You know, I I just, uh, when I said earlier, uh. An iterative 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 approach, uh, that's basically exactly what I was talking about. So um. You know, I I do think that uh. You know, that's that's possibly a good way to go. Um, some things are are within our reach. Um. Pre, you know, uh. You know, if we want to go to town meeting with something, you know, there are some things that are in our reach for uh. Town meeting at twenty twenty-four, but then there would be some things that that would be too much of a stretch to to get in there. I think that's absolutely true, Jeff, and. Uh, I do think of this, at least from my perspective, is, you know, what would be a long term kind of uh. You know, journey where, you know, there may uh be, you know, kind of uh multiple steps along the way. I agree.
Yeah, so maybe um my preference would be to identify the steps that are incremental in nature and. That would be a reasonable and uh easily passed or more easily passed in town meeting. Um. And then, once we see how that settles in, we could um progress from there. That would be um. For me, the logical way of progressing because otherwise there's just too much to do and and in one fell swoop and um. Um, anyway, that's all I need to say.
Yeah, I I I agree with Jeff on this, although I would not want to. You know, kind of dissuade us from gathering a lot of information kind of about the big picture and and what our purposes and what our goals are. But uh not to uh the point that it would, you know, prevent us from doing anything.
So just in supporting the incremental approach, what I would suggest everyone maybe revisit is. The spreadsheet that I sent out and I can resend it breaks down each of the components. And I think. There's definitely things in there. If you look at it, it says what the current state is, and then I sort of identified. What my thoughts could be, like, we should discuss this or not. Um, but I think that's probably the starting place for the incremental. Um, so like, just looking at it now. We're right now, you can only have one ADU on a lot, you know, if you allow two. Interesting concept.
You know, that's a, all right, so there's, I think, two uh. Things, right? One is uh. Accessory dwelling units and the other would be um. Uh. I don't call, I want to say site requirements. Which would be lot size, right? Uh, dimensional requirements. Um. And what those would be for a uh primary use. So, you know, let's say accessory use, primary use. What's the uh low hanging fruit that's that's within our reach? Um. Right? So that's our, we'll call the, we'll call that our our two pronged uh primary uh. Step. In this direction. So what we can kind of think about that, but we also uh. And, you know, I don't, you know, we'll. Start to think about uh like a clustered or, you know, modified open space design. Um. Type approach where you're gonna have potentially, you know, some shared utilities and that stuff. You know, I think we need to. You know, start looking at that and thinking about it, but that's probably not going to be in that first iteration per se, maybe, but you know, you know, we're not uh. You know, gonna jump at that too quick, right? We'll start with uh. Uh, accessory use and uh primary use. And then um kind of get some stuff together for that and uh also, you know. Start building on, you know, like a broader um. Uh, cluster type thing. Uh, Keith, what you got?
So. I'm all for the the affordability part, although. Uh, part of me thinks. Living in a a dispersed rural hill time till hill town. Uh. Especially for people that don't have cars. It's it's. I mean, it it's an inconvenient place to live. It's inconvenient for me and my family. Just going to the grocery stores of, you know, twelve mile trip. Um, but the second thought is, you know, we seem to be thinking. Um. That it'll be an owner building on these sites. Is there any concern that people will build rental units that the? The tiny house concept could become uh. Uh. Much like downtown Amherst, uh, with the student housing issue with the with the. Housing in the neighborhoods down there.
Yeah, well, I think that's a great point, Keith. So I think in right now for the eighty years. One of the two. Um, well, it has to be owner occupied. So, you know, if we kept the status quo in terms of that. Um. And then if the primary, I think. It's right now, there isn't a requirement. Um, you know, you could build a regular sized house and rent it out.
Right.
Um. But I think your your question, it's one of those unintended consequences. Have to play out of like. Just, and that's what I was thinking, like, someone could say, oh, I'm I'm gonna build a whole bunch of these little things, rent them out. And then it does create sort of that. That tension. So I think it's it's a great question to ask. Uh, just from my research, I think from the ADU perspective. The towns that have them, sometimes they're they're designed to be exclusionary. So either it's that owner occupied. Like it could be owner occupied and the second house has to have like a relative in it.
Right.
So, you know, and so that in my personal sense, that's probably a little bit exclusionary.
Right.
Uh, or intended to be, but I think it's a really important point because part of the zoning by law is. We. We had to be aware of sort of what is in town, what's consistent, be inclusive, but also know that we're not. You know, I, it's a good question.
Oh, there there there's a myriad questions. I mean, it is. Hugely complex.
Yes, it is. And, you know, Michael alluded earlier to, you know, potential dust storms, right? So uh. You know, um. And I think that's, that's why Robert is probably talking about, you know, primary use, someone can build a tiny house and, you know, if you were to do that, it would be. Um. It would be cheaper than, you know, building a really big house, right? You know, it's 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 less, um, kind of going back, you know, like, uh, you know, I was. You know, the the one other, you know, thing that came on my, you know, brief conversation with Rita on it was that, you know. A lot of the expense of a house. Is um, you know, and Deacon touched on this too, like your your utility hookups and, you know, septic and well. You know, and then. Also, just, you know, kitchen and bathroom, right? All the plumbing fixtures, you know, the electrical system, having, you know, the uh circuit breaker in there and uh. You know, wiring up, yeah, obviously, it's a lot less wiring in a in a tiny house, but you still have to have. You know, electrician come in and do that and and um, you know, have a meter and some of those uh components that are uh pricey, right? So. That's where the real like bang is as far as the expense of a house. Um. So. It's it's a challenge to make it economic. And and you know, to make it, you know, a real kind of uh. Dent and and affordability, but that's what we're looking at. And, you know, we're gonna be talking about, uh, you know. Something that might be like a, I don't know, apartment complex or like a rental complex or. Uh, yeah, I mean, not specifically, but uh, you know, we could get in that area of discussion and I want to kind of set the level right now that. Right now, the board is not committed to. Any one approach or any, you know, pathway. This is an exploratory phase of this. And obviously, you know, in the end, any changes we make will be going through town meeting. So we are going to need to. Keep in mind the, you know, what people are gonna want to vote for.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, we also have to keep in mind of. Some things are out of the hands of the town. We we can't determine what somebody wants as far as. How many bathrooms or kitchens or stuff like that? That's. There's just a cost associated with building a structure. Um. You know, we can perhaps change again the the. The lot size requirements and things like that, but. But as far as affordability, there's some things we that are out of our hands.
Oh, of course, yeah. Um. So. We're gonna look at uh. Accessory use and primary use to start. Um. We're gonna look at uh. You know, try and get a better under, a better handle on. Utility stuff, combined utility stuff. I think that's a pretty good takeaway for now. Um, does anyone want to add anything to that or any further comments or questions or anything?
I just want to thank everybody for the conversation. Um, I think this is a great way to start. Who knows where it'll go, but having this kind of exchange is valuable. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And, you know, I mean, I uh. You know, for the time being, I'm committed to just putting this on the agenda every time we meet. Um. You know, as long as uh we have a consensus to do so and. You know, I'm not hearing any objections from any board members, so that's uh we'll just keep plugging away at this. And see where we get.
And thank you, Michael, for sending us all the information and for your footwork and. Not only in this and also in the lighting. I don't know if we'll get to that today, but thanks for all of your, all of your effort. Thank you.
I'm figuring not talking about lighting as a gift to the group.
Yeah, still, uh, that's still on the agenda later. We might have time to talk about. Um. Okay, so uh, next we're gonna have a. An update on the polls uh complaint. And this is uh based on public information. That's not why, that's why we are not going into executive session for this. Uh, and that's gonna be provided by Michael.
Okay, this is very short. Uh, so. As Nathan said, uh, I got an update from Donna a couple of weeks ago and apparently. They had a hearing in Landport uh a few weeks ago and. The town was arguing about getting the extension with summary judgment. So summary judgment was supposed to happen very soon and. Just remind everybody, that's when the the judge says the facts clear enough. He he was just gonna make a decision. Um, the town was arguing that. Not only are the facts not clear enough, but the town actually needed more information to make that determination. Uh, so, one of the things that the. Plaintiff was saying was that. Our bylaw made buildings, solar developments unaffordable and not not profitable, so they couldn't do it. So. A good example is you 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 need a little bit more information to fend against that for someone to say it is affordable or not affordable, et cetera. So the bottom line is that the judge gave. Uh, the town up to June two thousand twenty-four. Um, for a hearing on summary judgment and can do discovery in between. So between now and then. Donna and Adam, her partner, are gonna be trying to look into information that. Can take on those seven points that were in the complaint, um, so that we can deliver better information, um, when summary judgment. So that is the update.
So there was no summary judgment on anything?
No. All seven move forward.
I I assume that Donna looked upon this as a positive, um. Or what was her take? And say?
Well, the, to quote her as part of the sentence, she said, the town won the day. So I think it was, she thought we did good.
Well, she was anticipating that there would be partial judgment on on some of it.
Yes.
That's good.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's. A couple of items which. The facts are clearer than less clear. So, but this is the good that all seven are just moving forward as as a bundle.
Thank you for the update, um, I appreciate it, Michael.
Sure.
All right, all right, that's that. Um. We have some minutes, right? Uh. Do we uh want to do uh minutes right now?
Yeah, two of them are really easy.
Well, you know, um. I don't know. I, are you talking about the select board minutes?
Yeah. Bring it forward for everybody to look at and see if I got it right and I didn't leave anything out. Um, so somewhere in the next month or two, I'll do that.
Oh, shoot.
Thank you. That's me.
Yeah.
Not talking.
That was, uh, I just opened a browser and I had, uh. I was looking, I think probably related to minutes, looking at one of the uh meetings we had, but um. So. We had the uh, yeah, PP. Uh, Carrie, and you know, why don't you go ahead? Do you want to share one of the uh? Select board meeting ones? Nine, twelve, maybe?
Yeah, I can do that.
You want me to make a motion if we're gonna do it?
Well, you know, I just, I'm trying to. Find them real quick, but I thought that I maybe saw some uh. Issues with uh just. Like technicalities, like it might be quick to update, so maybe we should uh. Yeah, so it's uh. You know, for like the nine, twelve one, I don't know if it's. It doesn't say which members are present.
Can you guys hear me? Am I still unmuted?
We can hear you.
Okay, um. So, yeah, it doesn't say who was present. Um, typically, like I've done in the past, this is. Exactly what I've done. I just excerpted. The parts that were. Including planning board. Um. Into a document and quoted who I, who took the minutes, so I'm not taking any credit whatsoever.
So you could just, I mean, Carrie, you could just add who's present and not present. And make it our own and then sort of insert this.
Yeah, I could do that. I would have to go back into uh the minutes to see who was listed in there.
Yeah, I know, I mean, that's uh, we might have uh. Let, you know, Ben. A little bit less thorough uh in the past. I just happened to, you know, recently kind of uh take a peek at. At that, I can't, I think I might have seen a like open meeting law, like minutes checklist or something and. You know, involves, uh, you know. I'll I'll send that to you, Carrie. Um. But, yeah, just. Wanted to make sure we had that um in good order. Um.
So just for clarity, um. Going forward with these, do you want me to include everyone that was present or only pertaining to planning board and select board specifically or?
Well, they, you know, I I guess it would be uh. You could use the information they have in the in the select board minutes because that's gonna have, you know.
Yeah, yeah, but I wanted to make sure that, like, if you were pertaining, you want, like, everyone that's present in that meeting list or just pertaining to planning board and or select board. But if you want.
Certainly the, you know, because it, it basically it's a joint meeting, right? So we form like a, you know, a quasi body that includes both the planning board and the select board.
Not, not for minutes, just for the vote.
For the vote, yeah, but I, so I mean, I would imagine though that as far as the minutes go, you would at least need to like state, uh. You know, what select board members are there and everything like that, which, um. Yeah.
I have a suggestion, rather than spending more time, why doesn't, um. Carrie check in, um. With Grace. And, and see what the best protocol is. Um, I mean, but.
Yeah, I agree.
Leslie could probably answer this because she's an expert in this stuff as well, but I don't want her to put her on the spot.
Yeah. Um, should we look at, uh, the September eleventh meeting? Minutes?
Yeah, just one second.
I can make a motion about this one.
That, that sounds good.
I'll move to approve the minutes of September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All right, so discussion, um. I think, I think, uh, I sent, I sent some, uh, edits on these ones, right, Carrie?
Yeah, I received, um, some edits from everyone and I went back and included the majority of everyone's edits. So. Is there anywhere specific we want to look at?
I would.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think what we had been doing, which worked well. Was Carrie sending out the drafts and then. Having us be able to send her edits so that. The edited version came back, got resubmitted after all of us first to, to look at. So this is a little bit funky because people can't really look what the changes were. So I'm okay with voting on it this time, but I think the process before it gives a little bit more comfort. Um, you know, and I know if Jeff were here, that was his issue is that he'd like to see what the edits were before he voted on them.
Yeah, and I, I was, um. Trying to look at it too, uh, you know, from, from the, uh, open meeting law perspective of. I mean, you know, I, you know, wow. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind being able to, you know, share it. You know, just, you know, so that you have all the edits in there and then people can go in and do what they need to do. Uh, I know that is a little bit dicey from an open meeting law perspective. You know, I feel like if it's, you know, kind of like grammatical stuff and, you know, immaterial. Uh, you know, fixing like a sentence that doesn't make sense or, or maybe, oh, you know, there was like this part of the conversation that, you know. You know, could be in there that occurred, you know, at some time of the meeting. It's really kind of matter of fact for. A meeting that already happened, uh, but for example, not doing things like, uh. You know, maybe commenting on, you know, how the meeting process would go forward or. Or, you know, uh, you know, these, uh, these are, you know, not detailed enough and they should be more detailed or they're too detailed, you know, something like that, um.
Well, that's, uh, so the fact that Carrie is not a member of the board. The, if she sends out draft and we all send them back to her separately without copying each other. She makes whatever edit she thinks is appropriate and she sends it back out. Then we can have a conversation based on that. That's, that's compliant with open meeting law. Uh, and inevitably. There will be those kind of changes, Nathan, that you're saying we shouldn't do now. Uh, so that's the best way to address that kind of stuff because we'll be looking at it all and we won't have to deliberate it on the draft.
Well, I mean, what I'm getting at is, you know, like if I make a bunch of changes and I send it out to the whole board and they say, oh, Nate got a edited version out and then, you know, you can go in and, you know, I already made sure that there's a capital C in your name. And you can find the one I missed and, uh, you know. But you don't, you know, you know, it's not like everyone's separately editing the same document and going through and making all the same grammatical, you know, fixes or, or whatnot, um. You know what I'm saying? But I, I guess, you know, I don't know. I want to try and get a little bit more guidance because I, I was looking at open meeting law determinations and I didn't really find anything that was. Conclusive, um, for this.
It's.
Since my time starting minutes, um, it's pretty complicated, if I can share. It's just a matter of making sure it's concise but detailed enough. Um, knowing when and when not to like include, like what's more commentary than like fact and pushing a decision and or like. Um, like substantive, like matter. Um, I think editing wise, this is the first time I've sent out drafts. Received edits from members, gone through the edits. And then sent out a newly edited version. And it honestly wasn't too bad. There were a handful of same edits, but I mean, once I fixed it the first time, it was easy just to kind of like. Find the other ones. So it wasn't too time consuming or. I didn't have a hard time with it.
Yeah, all right. Well, I mean, uh. Uh, Keith, you want to say something?
Well, I, um, I'm just thinking through how the, this, this group editing of a document can be, uh, uh. It can end up being circular as people make changes of other people's, it, it then it becomes, uh, people's choice on. Sentence structure or whatnot. But no, I just, uh. Carrie, thank you for putting that one, there are the changes in that I sent, but. I don't know. I sent you one real minor thing and I don't know how, uh, how particular you are with these, uh.
I usually with edits, I usually incorporate almost every edit, especially, I mean, most of my edits too are spelling, um. Between either me spelling it incorrectly or autocorrect getting me and never noticing it. Um, but I also do take account for a lot of substantive changes because I just know that my own. Limit of education on certain matters is limited compared to others. So. That's also very helpful. Um, the only time I wouldn't do a comment or like I wouldn't do an edit if I just thought it was like. So minor that wasn't needed, like. I tried to, since I've started, try to make my site like sentences concise. So I try not to do like. Describing words, which I was really bad at doing in the beginning. So if I ever find something that I think an edit is like that, I will incorporate it, but that's usually. The matter of a singular word versus like a whole sentence.
Which brings me to, I sent you an email that there was one little, uh, knit I had to pick and. This may be one of the insignificant ones you, you chose to ignore, uh, which was in the section where they were talking about me. And, uh, it mentions National Fish and Wildlife Service.
Something like that though, where it's appropriately citing something, I would definitely.
Yeah, that, that should be U S Fish and Wildlife Service. And again, I don't know if you got to that change or not.
I believe I did.
It was on the last, the last one you sent out.
Nope, should be. Nope, but I can fix it right now.
Perfect. That makes me happy. Was that?
I meant to do that. I thought I did, but I guess.
Was it changed it from Massachusetts to, uh, National Fish and Wildlife? Well, just make it, it, it's, it's actually the U S Fish and Wildlife, not National Fish and Wildlife, so. Right, thank you. Nobody would ever see it. Nobody's gonna go back and read this and pick up on that except for me.
Where your retirement check comes from, you gotta get it right.
Damn straight.
Yeah, personally, um, I think what we did recently with me receiving edits. I, I waited until I got at least like two or three people sending me edits. I sent out an edited version. And then if I were to get more edits on top of that. Then if I had time, I would have sent it out a third time, um, but unfortunately. Um, sometimes I don't get minutes out on time, so that's a restriction of myself that not getting it. Done properly at times.
Yeah, and that, and that's my bad too. It was Massachusetts, uh, Fish and Wildlife and I give her the edit of nationals to the U S. So I'll just take credit for that one. I mean, I think, uh. So you made that one, uh, you know. Pro- probably between, you know, the stuff I sent and Michael sent and Keith sent, we're probably pretty close. So does anyone have anything else they want to look at here before we take a vote?
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the roll. So, uh, let's say, uh, Dickara.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
And Raymond.
Aye.
Bonner.
Aye.
And Tycroft.
Aye.
And I'm an I. So the motion passes. Yeah, honestly. Okay, uh, we're gonna, uh, table the other two for the time being and I don't think we have October yet, right? That's true. So, uh, okay, we're gonna move on in the agenda. Carrie, thank you very much, uh, for putting up with us on this one.
Yeah, so just to recap, adding the, um. Who was present on both the select board joint meeting minutes and then just note, I did send out, um, October minutes as of I think last night. But I know that's way too late.
Yeah, um. Thank you for, uh, doing those. And yeah, uh, I'll send you the, uh. The checklist I was looking at too, Carrie, just for your reference and, uh.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate that. I didn't even know that existed. So that would have been super helpful if I had.
Yeah, like a year ago, right?
Yeah.
Um. And, and, and I'll just, I'll take another peek and kind of. Look through. I've been looking at a lot of stuff leading up to this meeting and I, I didn't quite get as thorough on everything as I wanted to, but, um. Thank you. Okay, next we have, uh. Furcog, uh. Designee. Does, is that how you say Furcog? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, as I understand it. Um, it's actually the select board that chooses a designee to, uh, this body, which is a, uh. Um, it's a, uh, was it Franklin County Regional Council of Franklin, uh, Regional Council of Governments?
Yep.
And there's a few different kind of pieces of it. There's the, uh. The planning piece, right? And that it goes, uh. So, um, uh, the select boards get to designate someone. Uh, and typically I guess, uh, shoots very, uh, delegated someone from the planning board. Um, as I stand it.
I think there's, I mean, way back, I think Jeff was it, then Jeff and I shared it all, though I only went to. I don't even know if I went to a meeting. But I think it's a group of. Planning board members that go to Furcog, like Furcog brings together lots of different bodies. So. I, I think it makes sense that the planning board would do the recommendation only because it's about planning zoning. Uh, that particular group.
You know, I mean, I agree. I, I'm just, uh. Kind of getting my feet wet on this and there was something I read on the, uh, on the website about that.
Yeah, it's been vacant a while.
Well, Jeff is still on it.
Oh.
But, uh, yeah. So. He's listed on the website and. Yeah, um, is anyone, uh, interested in, uh? In, in, in doing this?
Hey, Robert, if you volunteer, you could bring the tiny house to the. County conversation.
He's not answering. I'm not seeing that mute symbol come off. All right, um.
We should scratch Jeff though, that's for sure.
Yeah, uh. All right. So I guess, you know, at the very least, I want to maybe go to the select board and kind of confirm what, uh. What's going on with this, um. I am interested in, in, in going up and representing, uh, for the board. I need to, uh, I haven't. Had the necessary household conversations, uh, to do so. So I'm not prepared to, uh, commit to it right now.
When you're ready, I'm happy to recommend you or nominate you.
Yeah, uh, is there anyone like who would maybe be interested in, uh? In sharing it? All right, okay, um, I guess, uh. We're just, we're just gonna push on this. We don't really have anything to do right now. Um, Michael brought up a good point, uh. In that, you know, Jeff used to be the liaison to, uh. The owner of Wheelock currently Nextera. Some entity under the Nextera umbrella. And, uh, we have probably some contacts we can look up, um. You know, it's supposed to be written on the fence too, I think. So I, uh, meant to, that's another thing I wanted to do, um, but. So, um.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
So the, the thing that got me thinking about initially was that. A couple of years ago, we realized we were supposed to get an annual report from them. Every year, obviously, um, and we hadn't. So I think we did that two years in a row and Jeff was the point person for asking for it. Um, and I think. I looked it up. The last time that we had a site visit was September two thousand twenty-two. So we're a little more than a year over. Uh, and the way. Jeff had set it up is we would do a site visit, um, before the end of the year. The annual reports due by February fifteenth, so forty-five days after the end of the calendar year. So. Whether or not we do the site visit. Given that we're in November already is sort of questionable, but. I think we want to be able to have someone who's, you know, designated by us to reach out to them to. One, remind them that we needed an report by February fifteenth and two, if the board felt like it wanted a site visit before or after. Uh, that those logistics get coordinated. Those. You know, and of course, if there was an issue that arose, but, um.
You know, I, uh. I was wondering if, uh. Ashley, if you might, uh, be interested in taking this. Uh, you know, I, I, I thought of you because. You know, I think it's more or less kind of like a, a low effort in terms of the work involved. You know, it's just occasionally, uh, doing some coordination, you know, for a site visit and, uh. You know, maybe, uh, asking, hey, are you gonna send us the annual report? And then if, you know, something precipitates from it, it's more of a, it would be more of a group effort or can you work with other board members? To do, to, you know. Uh, do what needs to be done. Is that something that you'd, uh?
Can you explain again what you're asking?
I'm asking if you would be the liaison to, uh. The operator of the solar facility at, uh, Wheelock. Um, related to. The special permit decision, uh, that was issued, which entails receiving an annual report from them.
Right.
And, um.
Which you're saying we haven't received. As we're supposed to.
We're not overdue yet for this year. It'll be due on February, February fifteenth. It's due. But we might have to remind them of that.
So just basically sending an email to say, just making a connection. We just started. Wanting to make sure that this report is forthcoming and. Something like that.
Something like that.
Yeah, I think.
My brain isn't super functional at nine o'clock at the end of the day.
No, it's, uh, you know, it's about time to, to call this. I want to look at the agenda real quick and see if there's anything, um. You know, we need to, uh, do, but I'm forwarding you an email right now, um.
Yeah, I'll check it out. Um, I mean, if it's just sending an email, it's something that I can do.
And potentially coordinating a site visit as, uh, needed.
I don't think I can do that. I just don't. It's, it's. I just don't have the space.
Okay.
To do something like communication, yes. Um. This is a lot for me.
Okay, I'm sure if the board, uh. You know, because I'm not really, I'm not gonna be, um, directing stuff with, uh, Wheelock, right? So, uh.
Ah, right, I see, okay.
So if somebody is, uh, thinking that a site visit needs to happen, then, um. You know, they're gonna.
Those are infrequent. I mean, there's been, I think, one in the whole time that I've been attending meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's more about, yeah, I mean. I could. Sorry, going back and forth, I probably could do that. It would just be a matter of, of, uh. Communicating with people and trying to set up an actual time when everyone could get there. And I imagine we could talk about it in a meeting.
I, uh, I, you have my every confidence, Ashley, that you can do it. And you know what?
I.
Uh, if you, if you get swamped on something, you know. Just say that, listen, I'm, uh. I'm needing a little bit of help and that goes with anything, anyone on the board with anything. You know, if you're. Trying to work on something or, you know, especially if it's something that, you know, I asked you to do or if like the board voted for you to do and. You know, you're just. Doesn't matter what the reason is, if, uh, it's. If you're finding yourself a little bit, um. Overwhelmed, then, you know, ask for help, say, hey, I'm having trouble with this. I need help. Anyone on the board that goes for. All right.
Yeah, okay, so I'm happy to check out the email from you. And. Uh, I'll respond and let you know what I think. Is this something that we have?
This is just an email that is when we received the last report. So all it is is really for you is contact information.
Got it.
Um. You know, so basically, uh, it could be just like, hey, you know, uh, we received the annual report, you know, from you last year. Are you still the person, you know, we're going to talk to about this and, uh? And that would just about do it, I think.
I I think you, I think you should also include the letting them know that Jeff is no longer the contact because they might. Assume that.
That too.
Okay, got it.
He have, he may have useful information about the contact arrangements too. I mean, he will take phone calls.
Or answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think let's. Reach out and see if we need to contact Jeff after, like, if there's some reason.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, he just got his hand up.
Yeah, hey, so you mentioned those annual reports and I know they're supposed to submit one. Are they posted online anywhere? Probably not.
No, they they could be, yeah, they could be.
I I I would love to see what they're, uh, what they're doing over there.
Yeah, I I sure you're not the only one, so that's, it's, it's public information. It's a good idea. Tell the, tell our new webmaster. You got that written down there?
Yeah, all right, uh, let's see. And, you know, uh, Ashley, I, uh. You should have gotten an attachment and if you don't, then just, you know, uh, let me know and I'll kind of. Look at that again. Um. All right, so I'm just gonna try and go, we have, uh. Bylaw discussion, dark skies, okay.
Let's, let's skip it.
We're gonna have that. Um. Yeah, all right, we'll skip it, we'll skip it. So this is by law feat question, um, did anyone, uh, see, uh, email from, uh? The town manager, town administrator about, uh, fees, actually it was from Miriam. Uh, in response, she, uh, received a response from Becky on. A question related to fees and then Becky sent, uh, or Miriam sent out, uh, the email to a bunch of boards. Um, it cited, uh, General Law, um, Chapter forty, Section twenty-two F. Has anyone looked at this? Has any familiarity, uh, with this issue?
Well, I talked to Miriam about it because I was curious and I mean, what I. Told her and I'm glad Deacon's here and Leslie's here, um. We've been charging fees. For as long as I've been on the planning board, so. Either we were doing without having voted for it. Or. Equally plausible, no one knows when we voted for it because there's no documentation, but. Uh, I never thought there was, it's surprising, Deacon. We've always been charging fees for things, right?
Yeah. What, what's the issue?
Well, the way Miriam described it, I guess she jumped off was that. Apparently towns have to. Proactively vote. To allow all boards committees to charge fees, otherwise we can't. And so the record for that vote couldn't be found. I guess Becky and Grace looked for it. They couldn't find the record of it. Which in my mind doesn't mean that we didn't vote for it, just means it couldn't be found. But I just, I found that very surprising.
Well, I mean, I. But there's never been, I mean, this has never come up before. I mean. We've always.
Yeah, I know.
In in theory, this is like a real like. You know, moment.
Yeah, I I think the genesis was that the Concom wanted to. Charge fees. And Becky said, hey, we have to see if you can, and so Becky and. Grace looked into the record and. The law says you have to vote, the town has to vote for it. Uh, maybe Carrie knows, she's got her hand up.
I believe Miriam approached Donna about a question about the new master fee schedule. And, um, in doing so, she had to ask Becky, so Becky posed the question to Donna. Um, for Miriam. And kind of summarized it in that email that. Um, Miriam shared. And, um, so then Miriam had her own discussion with Donna and I'm just summarizing because this was what she told me, I think. The day after when I was in the office. Um, essentially. What I was told from Miriam is that Donna slightly walked it back in saying that she needs more time to. Research this. And that's all I've heard since. If that's helpful, hopefully.
Yeah, I was looking at it, uh, briefly and, uh. You know, the statute talks about, you know, adopting it and. You know, it talks also about like, uh, you know, an appointing board, uh, having to approve, uh, fees and obviously the. Playing board is not appointed, um, that's not to say that the statute wouldn't apply to us, uh, yeah, so I guess if if, uh. Donna may be, uh, looking into it more. Then, you know, it starts off, any municipal board or officer empowered to issue a license permit certificate or to render a service or perform work for a person or class of persons. Uh, made from time to time and fix reasonable fees for all such licenses, permits, certificates issued. Perpetual to statute and regulations. Um. But, uh. You know, a lot of our stuff may be provided for elsewhere in state. Law or in, you know, lawfully promulgated regulations, it's, it's, it's not clear to me, um. What this means for us, so I just wanted to, you know, at least. Touch base on it, um, you know, we don't have anything, uh, before us at the moment that, you know, uh. You know, and means that we're gonna need a. An immediate answer, but, you know, we'll have to. You know, look at this.
NR could come up anytime.
Of course, of course, um, and then, you know, and yeah, I know that the, uh. We have the new NR language that, you know, obviously, uh, should be posted soon, so, um. I was kind of, you know. Michael sent me a reminder on that and then, uh, this, this is also there, so I wanted to kind of, uh. Possibly figure this out before, um, making any changes. Even though it's not a change in the amount, but it's kind of, you know, Michael.
Yeah, just. Just a related quick question. So Miriam also asked me. About, uh, the Mullins rule because she was saying that. The. Town has to adopt the Mullins rule, which we also use, which is, you know, the ability to miss a meeting. And just while we're on, sort of on the topic and Leslie's here. Between Leslie and Deacon, do you remember when? We.
We. Hold, hold on, Michael, I'm sorry. So someone talking to me.
What? Okay. Um, I was curious if you or Deacon knew when the town adopted the Mullins because Miriam asked me, I had no idea.
The. The Mullins, I'm sorry, I had stepped away to talk to with my daughter.
So.
So I don't know, no.
Okay, okay. Deacon, does that ring a bell?
Um. I'm not, I'm not convinced that we ever adopted. The the Mullen rule, um, we.
We practiced.
We're not sure that we ever thought we needed to adopt it.
We adopted it. That's the one where you can watch all of the, um, recordings and then participate. Yes, we did and we had a form. And we had a tape recorder for people to record the meetings for it. I can't tell you when, but it was a long time ago when it first came out. I can look it up. It's probably, or Grace could.
Great. This is why I asked. Leslie, I so appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll mute myself, but I'll try to pay attention.
Yes, thank you. I think, uh, that's, uh. All we need to. Do for that. Time being, um. All right. No one anticipated business. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So we.
Second.
All right. Um. Tom. Thank you for sticking out. I just want to let you know that normally, uh, there's somebody here that. Says something or another for discussion, but they're not here tonight and we miss them, but they'll be back next time. But, uh. Thanks, everyone. I'm gonna call the roll. Oh, uh, Jeff, you want to say something?
Oh, no, 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 thank you.
Okay. Uh, Weston.
Hi.
Raymond.
Hi.
Bycroft.
Hi.
Take care of.
Hi.
Bonner.
Hi.
And I'm an I. I, uh, do intend to shoot for around two hour meetings, but. Oh, yeah, all right, well, um. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Bye now.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.